With liberty and justice for all. If you could all please remain standing for a moment of silence. Virginia, these don't sound right. For our armed forces who are serving abroad and those here who are fighting for our freedom each day, those who are lost and those who continue to fight. Thank you, please be seated. Can you hear me out there? Hello? Barely? Very little, right?
Yeah. They don't sound right.
Well, they were on.
Turn the volume up maybe, Eileen. It's up, hello? Can everybody else test their mics? Max, see if you've got anything.
Testing?
Testing, better, thank you. Okay, welcome to the Board of Trustees organizational meeting. Before we begin, I would like to congratulate and welcome our two newest trustees, Bob Morris and Ed Markounis. I look forward to working with both of you and the journey ahead. I hope that will be a good one and that we will all work together for the good of the village. We will begin by swearing in our new trustees. Virginia Menschner will be doing the honors.
Who wants to be first?
I'm standing over.
Will Bob's family please come up?
Sure.
(inaudible)
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 Hi, Robert Morris.
(inaudible) swear.
(inaudible) swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And you will faithfully discharge your duties as trustee of the Village of Suffering.
And I will faithfully discharge your duties as trustee of the Village of Suffering.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Did you get all your pictures, Bob?
I did.
Yes?
Excellent.
Okay.
(inaudible) Thank you.
(inaudible)
State ahead.
Hi, Ed Markounis.
(inaudible) swear.
(inaudible) swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And you will faithfully discharge your duties as trustee of the Village of Suffering.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties as a village trustee of Suffering.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I have to, we have to, I have to appoint her first, Virginia. You could, you could do that. I'll do them, I'll do them both.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have the depositories and newspapers?
Yeah.
Leave them with the men. Journal News.
That's it. And then, which one?
And we'll do the depositories.
Depository, sorry. Bank of New York. No, no, Chase Bank. Key Bank.
Okay, so we will designate the meeting days and times. The workshops will be the final Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM and the village board meeting will be the following Monday at 7:30 PM. The designation of official depositories will be Chase Bank, Key Bank, and First Niagara. I need a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes, so moved. Designation of official newspapers will be the Journal News and the Rowan Pro Times. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, when we move to appointments, village clerk for a one-year term will be Virginia Menschner.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Deputy village clerk for a one-year term, Kathy Van Sickle. I need a motion to confirm.
Second.
Nope, I need, I need a motion.
Motion.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Deputy village clerk for a one-year term, Kathy Van Sickle, I'm sorry, village attorney for a one-year term, Terry Rice. Do I have a motion? No motion? No second? Okay, that's a holdover. Assistant village attorney for a one-year term, Rob Magrino.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I vote yes, so moved. Acting village justice for a one-year term, Stephanie Adwar. Do I have a motion? No motion? No second? Okay, so there will be no acting village justice. Tax collector for a one-year term, Joanne Shafi.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, so moved. Deputy tax collector for a one-year term, Virginia Menschner.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, so moved. Treasurer for a one-year term, Michael Genito.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes, so moved. Deputy treasurer for a one-year term, Barbara Cotiers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, motion is carried. Historian for a one-year term, Craig Long.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, so moved. Register for a one-year term, Lynn Bryant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, so moved. Deputy registrar for a one-year term, Kathy Van Sickle.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, so moved. Sub registrars, one-year term, Joanne Shafi and Virginia Menschner.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes, so moved. Zoning Board of Appeals, member for a five-year term, Charles Barone. Do I have a motion? Okay, no motion. That's a holdover. Chairman for a one-year term, Henry Sussman. No motion, that will be a holdover. Alternate for a two-year term, David Hamilton. That will also be a holdover. Planning Board Member, five-year term, Paul Stanbridge. Holdover. Chairman, one-year term, Paul Godansky. That will be a holdover. Alternate for a two-year term, Daniel McInerney.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Alternate for a two-year term, Timothy McInerney.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Board of Ethics Member for a five-year term, Deborah Schonlieber. Holdover. Chairman for a one-year term, Jonathan Theodore. Holdover. Advisory Board of Culture and Recreation. Kathy Mills is the director. Members are Nancy Christopher, Luciacchio, Barbara Cotiers, Mary Guccione, Suzanne Joyce, Lynn Limbrick, Virginia Menschner, Kevin Patwell, Denise Schultz, Jonathan Theodore, Kathy Van Sickle, Darrell Schiller, Lisa Estrin, and Jody Schiller. Okay, I don't need any confirmation on that. Sewer Rent Appeals Board, member for a three-year term, Bruce McClintock, and Chairman for a one-year term, Stan Lushen.
Need a motion?
I don't need one. Recycling Committee.
I need one most.
Oh, and that one you do? Oh, that one I do.
So I'll second it.
Motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Do we need a separate motion on each?
Yes. Bruce McClintock? Do I have a motion?
As chairman, right?
He is, no, he is a member, three-year term.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Chairman for a one-year term, Stan Lushen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Recycling Committee Chairman, one-year term, Bruce Simon. Do we need him on this?
No, it's not on committee.
Okay, members for a one-year term will be Isabel Haggerty, Frank Hagan, Lois Hagan, Sandy Stead, Charles Barone, Patsy Wooters, and Sheila Foster. Representative to the community foundation will be Frank Hagan. Representative to the Mawar River Committee will be Jerry Levitas.
Mayor, previously we had two trustees to the foundation, of which I was one.
Yes. You still are.
Okay, you're just adding.
I'm just adding.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. I thought I was being deposed.
No, 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 no. Representative to the Mawar River Committee, Jerry Levitas. Resolution for the mileage reimbursement.
I think it's 53.
55?
No, it was 55.5.
55.5.
Was it 55? 55.
Right.
I tried to get an update, but I couldn't.
We think 55.5 perhaps.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is that a resolution?
No, just the mileage.
I need a motion on the.
So moved. On the mileage reimbursement.
On the mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the reorganizational meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I need a second? To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, our reorganizational meeting is closed. We will go on to the board meeting. We'll be setting the dates for the January meetings. I know that we had some conflicts for Mr. Morris and Mr. Markounis. Originally, we had set the workshop for January 7th and the board meeting for January 12th. Gentlemen, what is your conflicts? Well, how can we?
Well, December 30th and the normal board meeting on the January 5th.
Wait, wait, say that again.
Have the workshop on December 30th and the board meeting on January 5th.
Okay, hold on a second. We generally don't like to do the board meetings that close to the holidays because we don't get, a lot of people are away and they don't get a chance to be here for the meetings. That's why we pushed it out a little farther, so everybody's back from vacations and holiday and so on and so forth.
The 5th is four days after New Year's.
No, no, I'm talking about December 30th.
Can we do the workshop in the regular work, same night?
I have no problem with that. So you want to do it on Monday, the 5th?
Do both on the 5th?
Both on the 5th?
That's fine.
Yes? That's good with everyone? Okay, so the board, workshop and board meeting will be on January 5th. It will be one meeting, correct. We'll, we're gonna need a workshop at the new, so we'll have to start at 7. Yeah, so we'll start the workshop at 7:00 and the regular board meeting will be at 7:30 on January 5th. What time is it? We have some time, so let us have the fire department. Is someone here from the fire department? Yes, hi. Chief Canaski.
George Canaski, deputy chief of the fire department. Evening, mayor and board.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, very good. I'm hard of hearing, so you know, I thought they said they couldn't hear me. All right, so the fire department has three things on the agenda. The first is we're requesting permission to hold their annual chili cook-off for the other fire departments in the county on February 21st at the Hook and Ladder. The second item is a wing day fundraiser on January 18th at the hose company. And then the last thing on the agenda is the application for membership for a new member into the hose company, Maxwell Batel, from Wayne Avenue in Suffering, an 18-year-old member.
Okay.
As for the chili cook-off, I'll move.
Yes, please, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Permission to hold a wing day fundraiser?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The application, has that gone before the, before the company yet?
I believe so.
The membership?
This is for the insurance purposes.
Okay, excellent. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Two other quick things, just informational-wise to the board and the mayor. The Suffering Fire Department did send assistance to Erie County, New York during the storm and disaster, complement of two companies and eight members. They operated for 72 hours, numerous incidents, did very well. They're all back safely home. The last thing is, this is one from me myself in the village. I've been a fire officer in the village about 15 or 16 years now, and I'm actually retiring and moving on. So this will be my last time approaching the board, as mayor, and it's been a spectacular run.
Chief Canaski, before you go, I just want to say how you have been such an amazing asset to this village through so many storms and so many emergencies that I don't really truly know how we're going to get by without you except for me calling you on the phone saying, "Help."
(inaudible).
Well, we thank you for all that you've done for this village and for the New York City Fire Department as well. I know that when you retired from there, they lost a good man, and we're not saying that we lost you because we're still keeping you standing by. Okay, culture and recreation, Kathy Mills.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, village board, and congratulations to trustees Markounis and Morris. Welcome aboard. So a few events that we have upcoming in the village. I have some flowers up here for anyone that would like some. We have the parade, Christmas parade and tree lighting, this Saturday, December 6th. It will be a 5:00 PM kickoff. After the parade, we will be having the tree lighting here in the village and then the visit with Santa in the community center. We have the Pearl Harbor ceremony this Sunday, December 7th, here in Village Hall, and that will be at 2:00 PM. We have the Dare Dance next Friday, 9th, December 12th. It'll be at 7:00 PM. The Hoop Shoot that is sponsored by the Village and Suffering Recreation Department and Mawar Elks will be at the community center on Saturday, December 13th, starting at 10:30 AM. The Dare Tour Jog with Chief Osborne will be on December 18th to the 21st, and that will be at the community center. And then the Hanukkah Memorial Lighting will be on Wednesday, December 17th, and that will be at the gazebo and then inside the community center, starting at 6:00. And that's it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Grant writer, Fred Rala.
Good evening, mayor, board, and congratulations to the new board members. The Clifford Theater, we had received a $3,000 member item grant. That paperwork was completed and submitted about 10 days ago to the New York State Department of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Development. We should be getting the check within about 30 days. Once again, that's for $3,000. The Tree City USA designation, once again, for the first time last year, we were, the Village of Suffering was designated a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. The renewal application was completed last week and submitted to the Arbor Day Foundation, and we should be hearing within the next 45 days about the renewal for that. And you'll notice in Virginia Menschner Park, right here at the corner of Lafayette and Washington Avenue, we have the signs and the flags out there as, as we do throughout varying points in the village, recognizing the Tree City designation. Community Development Block Grant. This is the grant that we apply for every year through the Rockland County Office of Community Development. It's HUD money, and for the past five years, we were putting in applications for downtown pizzards. We had received approximately $450,000 for that program. This year, we're looking at some other possibilities for grant monies. The Citizen Advisory Committee, which was appointed by the board last week, has already met twice and will be coming forth in January with what we propose for, to put in for, for that application. That application is due at the end of January. It's also going to require a public hearing at the January meeting and also a board resolution. So just have to make sure that we work with Virginia to get that on board. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Fred. Any questions for Fred from the board? Nope, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Fred. Police Department, Chief Osborne.
Thank you, mayor and board. Trustees Markounis and Morris and Judge Bonacore, congratulations and welcome aboard. Very quickly, just some updates. I only have one item for the board to consider. It's regards to parking condition in Prairie Avenue. I met with several residents on Prairie Avenue, a contractor. There's a concern about the end of Prairie, the south end of Prairie Avenue, on the western side, down by where the landscaping companies at the end, when people are trying to get out of that intersection onto South Street. Definitely difficult times sometimes due to the trucks there. So we were gonna, we're looking to install a parking area for a very short distance at the end of that street on the right side. I think it's a great idea. I met with the residents and we sort of brainstormed a little bit to what would work for them, and I think the compromise that we came, you know, came to agreement on would be pretty good for the village, as well as the resident's benefit for safety. I'm asking for a public hearing for that for next month.
Okay. Do I have a motion for a public hearing?
Motion. Well, with January 5th, at what time?
January 5th, 7:40?
Okay.
No, we can do it.
You'll give me a description, chief?
Of course. I have the measurements already, I'll bring them up to you tomorrow.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, just a couple of updates for you. We have a lot of things going on. We have 31 arrests in November. We are looking to send two Dare Officers next month to Dare Training, to additional officers. We also have officers going to Bethelizer Training, to certify couple of officers for the Bethelizer machine, as well as field training officers. Field training officers, what that means is when new officers are hired, they vibe with another officer. That's always going to take, New York State will be changing it. The Department of Criminal Justice Services will be changing it to make it mandatory that the officers they vibe with have to be certified through them through a field training officer program. So we're sending two additional officers, which should bring us to about seven or eight, I believe, when we're done. So we have enough field training officers, way higher officers. We're focusing on cell phone enforcement and distracted driving. We ran an operation last week and very well. We're gonna be meeting with numerous community groups in January. Usually in January, I meet with several groups just to go over if there are any issues we have in our communities. And our Dare Hockey, I want to thank you guys for your support with that. We had 14 suffering teams, 170 kids this past division of suffering, as well as 28 volunteer coaches within our community. I appreciate the support and anything else you need, I'll be here.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Department of Public Works, Charles Sawicki.
Good evening, mayor and the board. Congratulations to the new trustees. I am requesting authorization to advertise bids for the Phase 1 sanitary sewer abatement project. I have left you a copy of the study that was performed by O'Brian and Gier. The bids would be due on Monday, February 16th, 2015, at 3:00 PM. This project is part of a New York State DEC consent order and requires a notice, notice to proceed be issued to the successful contractor by March 31st, 2015. The design engineering is being finalized and will be submitted to DEC for review and comment no later than December 31st, 2014. Construction activities will commence during the month of June, 2015. This project consists of nine, approximately 916 linear feet of sanitary sewer replacement on James Street and approximately 4,130 linear feet of cast-in-place pipe liner on Lafayette Hillside, Boulevard, Sunset, Forest, Oakdale, and Utopian. An engineering estimate is currently being finalized. The water magnitude cost for this project is $1 million.
Okay, I need a motion to advertise for bids.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Oh, he set the time and the date.
He did.
Yeah, it would be, again, it would be, the bids would be due Monday, February 16th, 2015, at 3:00 PM.
You got it, Virginia?
Yeah, I'll get it.
Okay. An agreement with Orange and Rockland Utilities has been finalized, requiring O&R to provide a $50,000 surety bond in lieu of escrow deposit for all right-of-way disturbance permits. In addition, O&R has agreed to pay $150 for each new utility pole installed and has agreed to mill and resurface Boulevard in all affected areas upon the completion of the new gas main replacement in 2015. I am requesting authorization to release to O&R $12,500 currently held in escrow account and a release of $400 in permits fees submitted and not required currently held in the general account.
Do I have a motion?
Is that subject to the proof of the surety bond? Or are they related to each other?
Yes, they are. And we will have this all completed by the end of the year. So we would, yeah, we would have the surety bond in place by the time we release the escrow funds.
So subject to the village having the surety bond in place, I would so move.
That's correct.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
Mr. Byrne.
Yes.
Mr. Markounis.
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Audience participation, if you'd like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Jim Janatino, Two Memorial. I guess it was an oversight, but I didn't hear a deputy mayor appointed.
Yeah, I'm not appointing at this time.
I think legally you have to have a deputy mayor.
At some point, there has to be.
Well, how long can that go on?
When I pick, when I decide.
I don't think that's legal, but I'm not a lawyer. Charles spoke about O&R. I'd like to know, are we even gonna take all the double poles out of this village? There's gotta be 50 of them around, and some of them have been around for two or three years. I mean, it's just another hazard waiting to fall.
Actually, we just met with O&R this week. I have a list of the, the double poles, and we have a schedule on getting those removed.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?[1701.62] Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello Mayor, hello Board. Congratulations, Mr. Markounis, Mr. Morris.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name and address for the record, Bruce Simon, 31 Utopian Avenue. I'm not here to complain about anything, I'm actually here to celebrate something. Every year, the recycling committee goes around during the, during the spring and summer to hand out best gardening award. They go around for Halloween to hand out best Halloween decorations and they go around in December for best holiday decorations. We're here today, obviously, December hasn't happened yet, so we do want to reward the best Halloween decorations. And it is my honor, along with the Mayor, to give this gentleman his award. He has been unbelievable about decorating his house and this year he just took it to the next, next level. I'm proud to know him, I'm proud to call him my friend. Ladies and gentlemen, from 20 Prairie Avenue, Ken Fast. Ken, come on up please.
Congratulations. We have a certificate, who you want to read the certificate?
We have a certificate for Ken and his lovely bride, Colleen, who could not be here today. Village of Suffering 2014 Best Halloween Decorations, presented by Village of Suffering Green Council. Ken and Colleen Fast, 20 Prairie Avenue, signed by the Mayor this 1st of December, 2014. Ken, you have earned it.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Got it?
Great, thank you Bruce.
I also want to say, Ken, although I don't have it with me and I apologize for that, I also have a gift certificate for you and Colleen to go out to dinner. You can thank Mr. Curly, because he'll be hosting it at his Shamrock Hotel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Michael, thank you Ken.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
How you doing? Michael Curly, 84 Orange Avenue, Suffering, New York. Congratulations to all the new people who are here, I know we all care about the village and we're here to stick together one way or another. I just want to point out, I think you made a very irresponsible mistake tonight, all right? We've had an assistant judge in this village for years. The purpose of that is, and I don't know the assistant judge, I've never seen her, never met her in my life, okay? But I know, I remember years ago, just seeing her when she was appointed. She's a young, intelligent, outspoken woman, okay? And I think that's something to be proud of in a community, okay? I remember when you were a judge, Mr. Byrne, you always had yourself an assistant judge. If I'm not mistaken, also, Mr. Judge, but just this afternoon, you called up someone else to be judge this afternoon in this village, okay? So you know it's something that we need, okay? I've never seen or heard this woman, any complaints about her, done anything wrong to the village of this suffering, but only be responsible to this village, okay? I also know Mr. Bonacor, who was a judge before, all right? He was appointed by Dagan La Court, who was a, who's a registered Democrat, I guess a Democrat all his life, and Mr. Bonacor was a Republican. They made that appointment at Shamrock Hotel, okay? It's a pub that's, in a building that I own, okay? And they made it, they made it at a spur of moment thing because they knew that when it comes to judgeship, it's about responsibility to community, all right? And every, and so just skipping this to me is reckless, at the very least. And I also, and I guess I'll go a little further, I'm sure Mr. Bonacor, okay, has even spoken with this judge, okay? And has worked with her before, spoken to her recently, okay? And I hope you took into account anything he may say, okay? I would implore upon you, Ms. Mayor, that you were right to the head judge immediately, okay? Because Mr. Bonacor has responsibilities of his own life, okay? He has a family, he has other things, and he can't do those arrangements that may be done in the daytime or nighttime, okay? And I respect Mr. Byrne, I'm disappointed in you as attorney, as a judge, okay? Because as we know, you're building a house in Florida, your wife and kids are already down here, okay? So while you're going down the weekend visiting and you're going away on holidays, we still have a village here to run, okay? And that's important to me, okay? And I wouldn't, if I didn't see reckless behavior, I wouldn't have got up there, I just would have been here to celebrate the night of our new start. But this is disappointing and more than irresponsible, it's reckless, okay? And I hope you reconsider this very quickly, all right? And not have to get the head judge to make this appointment for, for us, okay? This is a total shock to me, all right? All right? I guess I want to go a little further now, now that, now that we go that far, okay? And if anything I'm saying, anybody just speak up, because I'm willing to back up anything I say, all right? Okay, number one, at least give a, I would have at least would have gave the woman a chance to speak, all right? And this day and age, it's tough enough as a woman to get those appointments, to get those things, instead of getting them ripped away from you, okay? It's not right. Number one. Number two, I'll say it openly, Mr. Byrne, all right? We have many serious issues going on in this village right now. We have Orange Avenue now, which is one of our biggest decision. It's about a story, a store, a big building, which, when you guys did your thing, you made it look like it was a giant building. It's a five or six-story building, as I recall, with 91 units, okay? It's whether we do that for the benefit of this village or not. You can't vote on that building, on that issue, Mr. Byrne. You can't vote on it because you're the attorney for Mr. David Chin, who used to be probably one of our biggest violators of the, of the whole village, okay? We also are trying to buy a building across the tracks, or it's in consideration, I'm not sure exactly where we're at, the VFW, to do more things for the people of the community at the same time, try to make some money, okay? You can't vote on that because your law firm is also represented by that. Besides the fact, David Chin holds the mortgage on your property, okay? Well, we have, you know, serious issues here to look at, okay? And I really think that you, since you can't be here and devote all those times, you should really reconsider about at some point resigning and moving on, so we, because we have, like every community has, there's tough times and tough money, all right? And really, it's important enough for me to mention, all right? And I wouldn't have done it if it wasn't so much irresponsibility here tonight, okay? And even Terry Rice, I didn't hear you speak up for him. He's been a village attorney for years. He's a well-accredited attorney, right? Not only that, your firm recently hired him personally. So he's good enough for your firm to hire him, but not good enough to represent this village? I don't think there's, I think little politics going on here and not the best interest of the village of Suffering, and I don't accept that, all right? No matter who's doing it, all right? Well, I guess, I guess that's why, unfortunately, I didn't want to take a nice night and make it into a negative, but I think you should reconsider appointing that judge and reconsider it quickly and be responsible, okay? Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Rich Kopp, Ronnigan Drive, you know why I'm up here again? I like some sort of an update on what's happening with the Squires Gate development. Had a lot of promises, a lot of politicians saying everything.
With regards to what, Rich?
With the river, with the flooding.
You know, we have our, 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 um, River Committee working.
What River Committee?
With, Rich, are you going to let me speak?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the New York Rising working with our River Committee, side by side. We are right in the final phase now of the projects and we, you know, are working towards trying to use, I mean, I unfortunately do not get to make any decisions on what the projects are that will be presented to the Board, but I certainly do get a vote when the projects do come to the Board. And I can assure you that my first and foremost concern is for the flooding in Squires Gate. So that's where we're at right now. We're hoping, you know, I'm sure, as every Board member is, that that money will be used to help remediate some of the flooding in Squires Gate. That does not mean that I'm still not working with Ellen Jaffe, still writing letters, still trying to get the Army Corps of Engineers a little ignited, but unfortunately, those avenues have really been nothing but exhausting and a waste of time. So I'm really hoping that now that we have $3 million in our pocket, that we're looking at ways that we can be working on Squires Gate. I know that there are people on the Committee who also have the same sentiment and, you know, that's where we're looking to remediate flooding right now. As far as the quarry goes, that is not in the village's control. We are, it's not owned by the village and none of the applications were made by the village. We are told that it's still being decided upon, so we have not heard anything further from that, although we do check in periodically on it. But there is absolutely nothing that we can do as we are not the applicants for that money for the quarry.
Who was responsible for that?
The town of Ramapo.
It's funny, I mean, I got documents and papers and pictures home from all the politicians, the Board members, the town members. Oh yeah, we got the money, we got this money, we got that money. And, you know, when the camera's there, all the smiley faces, the white teeth show, and they tell you exactly what you want to hear.
Right.
We're working, we're working, we're working, but nothing gets done.
We have been advocating for it and we obviously have been very supportive of the application and we're trying very desperately, we have written letters, we have had conversation, but the bottom line is that we don't own the property.
But every, I've been at most of those Horizon meetings and my take, it was just a waste of time. That thing was dumped from the start.
What was?
As far as the quarry. Every time somebody mentioned the quarry, every, you know, nothing happens.
Right. I think because.
And that's about the only thing.
Yeah.
It wouldn't stop it, but it would help.
Right.
And that's all we want.
And I agree with you 100%. The problem is, is that I think because that application is still out there, New York Rising is looking at that. It's just my guess, I don't know for sure.
Now, what about this buyout that supposedly was supposed to have been decided by the village last month or something?
Okay, we are going to be meeting with FEMA on December 3rd to get more information on that. And as soon as we have that information, I will pass it along as I have with every bit of information I've gotten.
Okay.
Okay?
I just, you know.
No, I.
It affects me.
I absolutely, I totally agree with you. And I'm glad that you keep coming up and we keep updated.
There's only a couple of people in this, in that development that does anything.
Right, I agree.
You have people that are supposed to do things, but they're useless. Okay.
We'll keep you updated.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, Jean Henley, 135 Orange Avenue. Congratulations to the trustees. I know it's the last thing on everybody's mind, but I'd like to know the status of the pool. I know a lot of concrete was dug up along the edges of the pool and I'm afraid it being exposed like that over the winter months, that's, if there is damage already, there'll be even more.
Yeah.
So can you, can you please tell me what?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Charles, you want to give the update on that? We actually are looking into, there is a leak someplace and I believe they now have identified where the leak is, is what they're working on. Charles, you want to?
Uh, yes. The Water Department had excavated certain areas around the pool. As a result, you know, prior to doing that, they had removed the deck, the concrete deck. They did find several leaks, made repairs, backfilled, and we will be repairing and replacing the concrete in the spring.
And there's no chance of heavy snow compromising?
Well, it's, everything's backfilled, so all the piping's covered with soil. So we'll then come back in the spring and, you know, rework the concrete sidewalk or deck.
Thank you. Wish everybody a very happy holiday. Thank you.
Same to you Jean. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, we will go on. Uh, Village, oops, I'm sorry. Hi Deb.
Hi, I'm Debbie Tap. I live over on Oakdale and I have a few things to say. First of all, congratulations to the trustees. I run Deborah Taxi and every month I come up here and I say the same thing. And I guess I have to keep saying it. But now I'm getting a little bit specific. Annually, I pay taxi permit fees. Over the past few months, Campos Baron applied for a permit, he was not given it, and he has been working four months, five, six months now. He is working heavier than any of us. The four legal taxis for Suffering cannot work. We cannot make a living. And the, this guy, he jumps out there, he cuts us off. We sit at a red light to get to other customer waiting, no, he can cut right in front and grab them. Nothing is being done. He drives a silver Honda Accord, has a yellow top light, does not have taxi lettering. I advise everybody, do not get in an unmarked vehicle. I don't understand people doing it. Of course, you can see me from a mile away with my glaring pink smileys. He's there, he's taking away from us and he is in violation of our rules, regulations, laws, code. I don't know what to call it. It's not fair.
Okay, Debbie, are you calling it into the police department when you see this happening?
If I call it in, the dispatcher is not going to speak to me when I'm being robbed, when something is happening to me. I cannot. They laugh at me when I call the dispatcher.
Do you know?
Do I speak with the chief regularly about it? Yes, that I do.
Mm-hmm. And you're telling me the dispatcher laughs at you on the phone?
She won't come, they won't come right out and laugh.
Okay, so.
But what's going to happen when I have somebody, when I have a guy in the backseat about to do something and I hit that button for them and I've got like one second or one word and I need response? It's not going to happen.
I don't, I don't think I'm following you.
You've never driven around in a vehicle picking up strangers at strange hours.
No, but I, I think my question was, is do you alert the police department that they are in the village and they're picking up?
He's there every day, all day long.
Okay, but.
Him in particular. We're not even complaining about 10 of them anymore.
Right.
We're, he's the worst. He's the one who sat here a few rows back, him and his coworker, and they didn't respond when you brought up the meeting.
Okay, so, but you're, you're telling me you don't call it in though? You don't call it in when you see them in the village picking up the fares?
No.
No, okay. Chief, do you want to talk about the, what you've been doing proactively for the taxis?
Yeah, just give me one second. I, I spoke to the Board about it before. We've charged, I think well over a dozen, if not many more at this point, on licensed taxis. The problem I run into is to do a taxi thing, I need like three officers minimum. You need one to stand after, which we do all the time, another one stopping the cars and a backup officer, you have to. Uh, but the current manpower situation, which I know you know, we've spoken about it, and I'm trying to keep hold of time down, the current manpower, we tried it last week, officers got pulled off, call after call after call. I never got to complete it. So I, one of the things I suggested was under Section 248 of the Village Code, was that the code enforcers assist us, take and provide a man or two as well with us. That's what I brought up and I sent to you guys as a board, just to consider for situations like this, because I know it's a situation. We have been much more proactive on it, but the reality is, I'm being honest with you, with other things we're dealing with, I just can't commit, the officers consistently do it. That's just the reality of what I'm dealing with.
Right. I don't know where to go with it, but I do know that it's pretty unfair that I'm paying not to go anywhere with it. I have other things to bring up. I run a Facebook group called Suffering Friends and Neighbors. Everybody is welcome. It's a, it's a public group, you can just review it or you can join, you can put your two cents in any place you'd like. Every morning, I'll tell you what's outside my window, as far as the weather, and I'll give you what somebody else's weather is. But more importantly, we have put together a business listing of over 150 Village of Suffering businesses. I've been pushing for little things like spend a dollar in the village, just one dollar. Go out of your way to spend that dollar. To do anything extra, we've been, we worked on this list really hard together. I have it up there and now we don't know what to do with it. If there's anybody who has any ideas for it, any place that'll donate that help to us, we have that list now. It's the kind of thing that could go into the Suffering, oh, we don't have a Suffering hotel. Any place that would be. Somebody did mention that they're going to try and get it into the yearbook for the high school. It's just a little bit of recognition for the businesses of the village. It would have been nice if it had been coordinated with something with Small Business Saturday. I tried pushing that from my end as much as I could. Another thing that I'm pushing at and trying to build up some acknowledgement for is that we really can go solar. And I'd like to see a lot of the village going solar. Apparently, there are grants from New York State that homeowners, that these companies get to give the homeowner to change you over to solar for what you're paying for electric. I have the information up there. I rent, I can't even do anything with it. I can't play with it myself, but it's up and I'm happy to talk to anybody who wants to do it and, and let's play around with it. I also think that we could do things with municipal buildings, with any of the larger areas, and I'd love to see solar panels and wind, the windmills for energy over in the quarry. So there are things that people need to talk and to think about. I keep doing research, it's posted, it's up on the group, it's Suffering Friends and Neighbors on Facebook. And we're up to almost 900 people, so come join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we will move along. We have a public hearing on amending the standard fee schedule regarding snowplow operators' license fee. Terry.
Thank you. Earlier this year, the Board adopted an amendment to the Village Code that provided for licensing for snowplow operators. Last winter, there were a number of problems with the snowplow operators leaving big ridges in the road, plowing in people on the other side of the road and so forth. So it was suggested that we have a provision to require licensing so that there'd be some ability to enforce the regulations that prohibit the placement of snow in the road and so forth by the plow operators. That was adopted some time ago, however, in order to process the license, licenses of the applicants, a fee is required. The fee that was suggested is $75. The fee that was suggested is $75 for each year, and this proposal would amend the standard fee schedule in order to provide for a $75 application and licensing fee.
Okay, I open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the room who would like to speak with regards to this public hearing, please come up to the microphone. Okay, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Does the board have any comment? One second there. Okay, one second. Flip the tape. Okay, we're good? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris.
I want to go back to the issue of the deputy mayor.
We can't, we're in the middle of a public hearing, Mr. Morris.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I thought it was the trustees' piece.
No, no, no. We're voting on?
The $75 fee.
Yeah.
Yes. I, yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Thank you, Terry. Okay, Village clerk.
I only have one item, I'm real quiet meeting. This is from the Greater Chamber of Suffolk. Would like to request April the 19th, 2015, and September the 20th, 2015, as the dates for the Suffolk Street Fairs. We will only be having two fairs this year. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
That's it.
Thank you. Finance department. Mr. Genito, did anybody hear from him? Because he was coming. I hope he's okay. Okay, we will give the finance update at the next meeting. Mr. Genito was coming to the meeting tonight. I don't, I hope he is okay, because it's just not like him, and I, nobody's heard from him, correct?
No.
Okay. Trustees, Mr. Morris, you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd like to revisit the issue of the non-appointment of a deputy mayor.
Sure. It's not, it's not that it's not an appointment, I just not have, not made a decision as of yet.
Well?
So it's not that I'm not appointing a deputy mayor, I just not have, have not made a decision at this point in time.
Well, past, past history has shown that at the annual meeting, which this is, that a deputy mayor has been appointed.
Okay, would you want my reasons why I'm not appointing one at this time?
No, I'd like to go through the rest of the issue here.
Okay.
Part of the problem, as we see it, is we did some research, and at the annual meeting, by New York State law, the mayor is required to select a deputy mayor at this time. It's, the wording of the law is not ambiguous, it says the mayor shall appoint. I, you know, we talked about this, and we talked about being nonpartisan and working together, and, you know, the standard arguments would be, well, okay, you and Ed are new, and you don't know how to operate the village, which probably right. But we do have Mr. Hagan and Mr. Byrne, who've both been elected for a number of years now, and have, you know, obviously the credentials to run the village. During our conversations, we were told that the police chief would be the next in command. And I'm finding this incredible to believe that elected officials, according to, I'm not sure what laws we're looking at, I understand the village code in Suffolk, we looked at that in the library, and even that indicates that the mayor should pick a deputy mayor. And in the event the deputy mayor and the mayor are both absent, at that point, the police chief will take over the duties. And if the police chief is not available, then the highest ranking member behind the police chief will now become the mayor. This really seems contradictory to the village laws. We downloaded a copy of them, and it's, it's pretty clear cut. We sought some outside counsel on this also, and the outside counsel was in agreement with us that it's not a decision that you can just simply put off. It's designated that you will at the annual meeting select the deputy mayor.
Right. Okay, Mr. Morris, first of all, I actually called up to Albany today, and what I did find out is that the police chief cannot be one of the, take the place of the mayor. That's only if probably for the emergency plan is maybe what you were looking at. So that's not anything that, that's not anything that we could actually, I could actually implement. The reason that I have put off deputy mayor is because, as you had pointed out, you and Mr. Markounis are just starting here in the village and really don't have any knowledge of how the, the board and the village runs. My second concern was, as was brought up tonight, is that Mr. Byrne right now is in the midst of moving himself and his family to Florida, which is probably taking up a lot of his time, because if I was him, I would be in, want to be in Florida with my family as much as possible when not needed here for his own firm. So I just feel that that's an overburden to him at this point, as well as the fact that he just tries to spend weekends and holidays and so on and so forth with his family, that he would be out of town a significant amount of time. And as far as Mr. Hagan goes, he has not really participated fully in the business of the village as far as taking over the duties of the mayor. I don't believe that Mr. Hagan could sit here and tell you all that he knows the duties of the mayor, and he knows what's expected of him, and could run, run and just take care of all the duties. So therefore, that's why I am weighing my, my decision, it's weighing very heavily on me at this time. It is not that I'm not going to appoint a deputy mayor, I certainly am going to, but at this time, I have to take this as a serious matter, and I have to, to look at it, and I'm probably also going to try and get some assistance with the decision and my concerns, probably at, you know, the level of Albany Conference of Mayors, and, and to get some guidance on it.
Well?
So that's where I'm at right now.
Okay. We solicited the legal advice, and I'll give it to Terry, which is the law, which indicates when the deputy mayor is to be appointed. And again, I reiterate, it's not, I will, but you shall at the annual meeting, which this is. Second of all, we're using the, a pretty specious argument when we say, well, Matt Byrne's is in the process of moving, he had I don't know how much time. I think if we're going to be fair about it, we would ask Matt Byrne, can you carry on the functions? Again, this is only in your absence.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't assume, I don't assume that you're planning any long-term absences that should even be an issue, but the?
Unless you're taking me out, Mr. Morris, I don't think so. Unless you have some plans for my demise, I don't believe that I'm going anywhere.
Nothing on the current list.
Okay. So, but I am taking this very, very seriously.
My guess is that if you were gonna, if that was a legitimate argument, then Matt should have been asked, Matt, do you think you want to take over the deputy mayor's job in the event there's a problem? And Matt's a pretty honest guy, he'll either say yes or no. As far as Frank goes, again, he's been here a couple of years, he's been on more committees than God only knows how many.
He's been here a year, Bob.
He's been here a year.
Yeah.
But he's been involved in recycling, farmers market, any number of committees in the village for a number of years.
Okay.
But again, I think he was owed the courtesy of being asked.
Okay.
Do you think you can do the job?
As mayor, Bob, I have to feel comfortable with that. I'm not going to appoint a deputy mayor tonight, so?
Well, there's nothing in the law.
That's fine.
Again, Terry has a copy of the law, he can look at it. If you called the mayor's conference today, as we did?
Yes.
And downloaded the laws, there is no ambiguity.
Ambiguity.
Thank you. In the meaning of the law. It says you will appoint the deputy.
And I will.
No, it doesn't say at your discretion.
Okay.
It says at the annual meeting, you will appoint deputy mayor.
And I will.
Your previous deputy mayor didn't have any mayoral experience either, and she was appointed without a number of prerequisites that you seem to want to have from Frank or Matt.
Okay.
So I, you know, I'm not understanding why the double standard.
Okay. It has to be one of you, and it will be.
If I may?
Sure.
According to New York State laws of the village, I just want to read to the audience so that we're all clear, and that we, we all know what we're talking about, is that in section 400, the mayor shall be the response, it shall be the responsibility of the mayor to appoint one of the trustees as deputy mayor at the annual meeting, who during the absence or inability of the mayor is vested with all powers and may perform all the duties of the mayor. Two, if the mayor and the deputy mayor are both absent or unable to perform the duties of the office, the trustees shall appoint one of their number to act as deputy mayor during the absence or inability of the mayor and deputy mayor appointed by him. So it's a critical point here, that if something does happen to the mayor, this is our concern, is that there is a mayor to come in, a deputy mayor, and act and discharge the duties of the mayor. This is very clear, and we should have an opinion on it from legal counsel from the village.
Okay.
We spoke to NICOM. NICOM concurs with us that the deputy mayor should be appointed at the annual meeting, which is tonight.
Okay. Let me just point out to you that if my demise should come, which I'm really getting a little uncomfortable talking about, I think it's getting a little too much, you are still the board members, so if there's no deputy mayor, you still can appoint one of you to run the meetings.
It's?
So don't worry.
It's actually not what it says.
There'll still be, there'll still be somebody, if there's no deputy mayor and there's no mayor, then as a board, you can appoint one of you to run the meetings and assume the duties. So you're covered.
We would like to have a deputy mayor appointed.
We will. We will have one.
Tonight. It's the law from New York State.
Okay, and I will, I am in contact and will continue to be in contact with them with my concerns.
Can we get a written opinion from the attorney?
A written attorney?
You accurately read the law, that's what it says.
Well, I would like your, your interpretation in writing.
Fine, but you accurately read the law, so I, I don't disagree with what you said.
Well, since I was, since I was sort of not given the correct information, I just want to be sure in writing that I have the correct information, and that the Village of Suffolk Board, mayor and board, are following the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. All right.
I'm not, I, mayor?
Yes.
I was born and raised in this village, and despite reports to the contrary, 35 Campbell Avenue, Suffolk, New York, is where I put my head on the pillow at night. And I take second seat to nobody in my concern for this village that I have served for a total of 17 years in one capacity or another. The law firm, which has been referred to tonight, has been part of this village since before I was born, 1956. That courtroom across the hall there is named after the founding partner, Joseph Balsamo. I take second seat to nobody as to my concern for this village, my work for this village, and doing what's right for this village. And I will not be criticized for doing otherwise. I have always had and always will continue to have the best interest of the village at heart. I've represented hundreds of families in this village as their private attorney. Many of you are sitting in this room tonight. I see you all. You know me. You know my work ethic. You know my ethics. You know my honesty. As to the issue of the acting judge, I am sure that once we have a dialogue on that issue, that will clearly be worked out. I have no question about that. No question whatsoever. But there needs to be a dialogue, and I'm sure the mayor's open to that. The dialogue on appointments was scarce, but I'm sure that reasonable people can sit down and work out reasonable issues. I have no reason to believe the mayor's not reasonable. I know I am not, I'm not unreasonable, and I'm here to do what's best for the Village of Suffolk. So once again, let me just close by saying, I take second seat to no one on this board, no one in the audience, in my concern for our village, the village that I was born and raised in, that I continue to live in, that I raised my family in, and that won't change. I will not resign my position as a village trustee tonight. When and if it ever becomes an issue in terms of my living in Suffolk, clearly, I can't be a trustee anymore. That's simple. But this is the village I've served for 17 years in official capacity, and many more years in many other ways. And I will continue to serve this village as village trustee well beyond today, doing what's right for the village, taking into consideration what is best for the village at all times, whether it be the employees, whether it be the taxpayers. And it is, it is news to me, and it's news to my family, that I spend weekends in Florida, because they're going to wonder where I've been. And I must say that while I get an ample salary as village trustee, it is not enough to pay airfares every weekend to anywhere other than maybe, I don't know, maybe a ferry to Hoboken or something like that, from Hoboken. So I leave you with that, with that one comment. I will do what's best for the village at all times, and I take, take second seat to nobody in my concern for our wonderful village. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne, I just have one comment, and yes, your family's been here for a very, very long time, and I wasn't, I, I don't think I said every weekend, but neither here nor there. You and Mr. Hagan have both been on this board for a year, you know that these appointments were coming up, and I have not heard from anybody on this board until I heard from Mr. Markounis two hours before the meeting, that he wanted to have an executive session. My door is always open, and I certainly would have welcomed any dialogue whatsoever in my office at any time, but I heard from no one, so I just want to make that clear. But yes, certainly dialogue going forward, reasonable, responsible, I'm all about that.
Mayor?
Yes.
We did have dialogue in regards to the deputy mayor appointment.
No, I'm not talking about the deputy mayor appointment, I'm talking about the acting village justice and all other appointments.
We had dialogue in your office about the appointments, the upcoming appointments, we did.
Right, we had, we had two?
You told us what you were going to do.
Right. I told you what I was going to do, exactly.
Right, and then we had to research it.
But I didn't hear any, anything, besides the deputy mayor position, I did not hear anything but one other gentleman who you wished to put on the planning board. Other than that, I heard nothing of any of the holdovers that you were not happy with my appointments. You never gave me any dialogue on that. Okay, moving along to my section, Ernie Bonacore is our new village justice. I would be proud to swear him in at this time.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, sirree.
Aye, Ernest Bonacore.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village justice.
Of the Village of Suffolk.
Of the Village of Suffolk.
According to the best of my abilities.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.